I would like to call the USD 305 Board, meaning to order, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do we have any additions or corrections to our agenda?
No, Madam President.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
I move we accept the agenda as presented.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign. So moved seven zero. I would take that moment to welcome our newest board member, Ms. Ramona Newsom. Moving on to our recognitions and presentations, starting with Jennifer Bradford Vernon.
This evening, we will be recognizing the Superintendent's Excellence Awards. Our first group awards goes to students who qualified for Nationals with Business Professionals of America at South High School during the State Leadership Conference, Sumontoy co-sponsored with Susie Nolton. Will you please join Mr. Hall in the front? If all the National Business Professionals of America students would line up as well. The following students placed at State. Jane Wang, Senior, National Qualifier, Advanced Spreadsheet, Medical Office Procedures, Administrative Support Concepts, Project Management, College Competition, Marketing Management, Human Resources. Tyler Ross, Junior, National Qualifier, Medical Office Procedures, Financial Math and Analysis, Prepared Speech, Marketing Management, Human Resources. Marissa De Luna Gomez, Sophomore, Spreadsheet, Broadcast, News Team. Alexis Barnes, Senior, Extemporaneous Speaking, Interview Skills. Cheyenne Byrne, Senior, Digital Publishing and Broadcast News Team. Julissa Singanen, Small Business Management Team. Eli Truay, Junior, Small Business Management Team. Please allow the Board of Education to congratulate you now.
Congratulations.
Thanks so much.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much for all the work.
Our next group of awards goes to South High School wrestlers who qualified at State. Gary Sibel is their coach. Will you please join Mr. Hall in the front? And will all the wrestling students please line up next to Mr. Hall and Mr. Sibel? Brenner Vogon, Sophomore. Brenner had a season record of 2619 and placed sixth at State. He was honorable mention. Alan Heberly, Junior. Alan had a season record of 2410. He was first team, AVCTL All League. Please allow the Board of Education to congratulate you now.
Great performance.
Thank you so much.
Well done.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
We now recognize Central High School wrestlers who qualified at State. Shannon Peters is the coach. Will you please join Mr. Hall in the front? And will Salina Central's wrestling students please line up? Isaac Ward, Senior. Isaac had a season record of 2620. He was second team, AVCTL All League. Terrell Harder, Senior. Terrell had a season record of 1921. He was first team, AVCTL All League. Dalton Peters, Senior. Dalton had a season record of 372 and placed third at State. Dalton was first team Senior All-State Academic Award and first team AVCTL All League. He claimed the national championship in eighteen and under at the Rocky Mountain National Tournament. Kyle True, Senior. Kyle had a season record of 386 and placed sixth at State. He was first team Senior All-State Academic Award and second team AVCTL All League. Jack Helby, Senior. Jack had a season record of 3110. He was an honorable mention. Mike McMullin, Senior. Mike had a season record of 383 and placed fourth at State. He was first team Senior All-State Academic Award and first team AVCTL All League. Drew Burgun, Freshman. Drew had a season record of 3210 and placed fourth at State. Taylin Peters, Freshman. Taylin had a season record of 379. Julian Falco, Freshman. Julian had a season record of 3016 and placed sixth at State. Please allow the Board of Education to congratulate you now.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Outstanding performance, you guys. It's really great. Congratulations. Really proud of the work you guys did. Great job. Outstanding. Thank you for all. Thank you. Great performance, you guys.
Our next group of awards goes to South High School Swimmers who qualified at State. Dustin Burkard is their coach. Will you please join Mr. Hall in front? And will all the swimming students please line up? Alex Dombrowski, Junior. Alex is a member of the 200 medley relay, 100 backstroke, and 400 freestyle relay. Brendan Borkerting, Senior. Brendan is a member of the 200 medley relay, 500 freestyle, 200 freestyle relay, and 100 breaststroke. Zachary Kazicki, Senior. Zachary is a member of the 200 medley relay, 100 butterfly, 200 freestyle relay, and 100 backstroke. Rafe Young, Senior. Rafe is a member of the 200 medley relay, 200 freestyle relay, and 400 freestyle relay. Trenton Fabrizius, Sophomore. Trenton is a member of the 200 freestyle relay and 400 freestyle relay. Gus Riddle, Senior. Gus is a member of the 400 freestyle relay. Would you please allow the Board of Education to congratulate you now?
Congratulations.
Great job.
Great job, guys.
Congratulations.
Good job. Congratulations.
Next, we have awards for Central High School Swimmers who qualified at State. Dustin Burkard is their coach. Would you please join Mr. Hall in the front? And will all the swimming students from Central High School please line up? Gage Burmaster, Freshman. Gage is a member of the 200 medley relay, 100 butterfly, 200 freestyle relay, and 100 backstroke. Ben Strumman, Senior. Ben is a member of the 200 medley relay. Eldon Taskinen, Junior. Eldon is a member of the 200 medley relay, 100 butterfly, 200 freestyle relay, and 100 backstroke. Peyton Chard, Senior. Peyton is a member of the 200 medley relay, 100 butterfly, 200 freestyle relay, and 400 freestyle relay. Antonio Benuelos, Senior. Antonio is a member of the 200 freestyle relay and 400 freestyle relay. Aaron Nesting, Junior. Aaron is a member of the 400 freestyle relay. Andrew Rutherford, Senior. Andrew is a member of the 400 freestyle relay. Would you please allow the Board of Education to congratulate you now? Our next group of awards goes to South High School Bowling Students who qualified at State. Colin Carlson is their coach. Will you please join Mr. Hall in the front? And will all the bowling students please line up as well? The girls' team took first place at regionals and fourth at State. Casey Arnold, Senior. Kaitlyn Baker, Junior, Sixth Overall Series. Maria Salinas, Senior, Tenth Overall Series and Eleventh Overall Series at State. Michaela Talbot, Junior, Second Overall Series. Brittany Trombo, Senior, Fourth Overall Series. Shelby Wood, Junior. The boys' team took first at regionals and fourth at State. Caleb Demel, Sophomore, Fifth Overall Series, Fifth Overall Series at State. Caleb Doherty, Senior. Dustin Lafer, Junior. Kyle Miller, Sophomore, Eighth Overall Series, Sixth Overall at State. Gustavo Salinas, Sophomore. Dane Vanatta, Sophomore, Third Overall Series. Please allow the Board of Education to congratulate you now.
That's wonderful. Congratulations. Congratulations. Good job. Congratulations. Congratulations. Look at that. Great job.
Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you. Nice plow.
Our final award this evening is for Central High School's Bowling Student who qualified at State Competition. Will Seth Gunnelson and Joe Wilkerson, Coach, please come forward? Seth Gunnelson is a junior. Congratulations.
All right. Moving along in our recognitions and presentations to our Challenge Award presentation with Ms. Horst.
Well, it's really good to be at home. And I've been listening to what was going on in Topeka and I'm glad I'm here instead. Anyway, I would like to thank you very much for allowing me to be here this evening. The Kansas State Board of Education's new vision for Kansas education is that Kansas will lead the world in the success of each student. We know that our schools are doing extraordinary work every day for the students of Kansas. But just as President Kennedy said more than 50 years ago, when he was delivering his famous "we choose to go to the moon" speech, we believe this goal will organize and measure the best of our energies and skills, whether you are a student or whether you are a staff member. And I'll include the board members in that as well. Tonight, it is my honor to be here to recognize and celebrate two of the great success stories in our state. The schools being honored here tonight are making a real difference for our most at-risk populations. Only 61 schools in 34 of the Kansas districts are being honored with the 2015 Challenge Awards. And tonight, it's my honor to honor two from USD 305. So you should be very, very proud. Knowing firsthand how much hard work and total commitment goes into that effort, I'm extremely proud and pleased to honor Oakdale Elementary and Central High School with 2015 Challenge Awards. This award recognizes schools for outstanding achievement and uncommon accomplishment on Kansas Assessment Results. I want to take a moment, though, before I actually get too far into the presentation, to thank the members of the Confidence of Kansas Public Education Task Force for their vision in creating this award and for their ongoing work and commitment to make sure we can all come together each year and recognize the hard work of our teachers, administrators, and students. And I believe that you as board members are members vicariously, I suppose, of that group. So you can kind of pat yourself on the back. It's a group of education organizations, for the most part, and others who are interested in education that make up that task force. In the decades since this award was created, we have significantly improved the performance of Kansas students in reading and math and have narrowed the gap between ethnic groups and between our economically disadvantaged students and those who are not. But there is still a lot of work to be done. And so I am going to ask that our Challenge Award schools here today continue pushing forward for the great work that they've been doing and to help us share with other schools and districts the strategies that you have found to be successful so all Kansas schools can achieve even greater progress in this effort as we work toward reaching our vision for Kansas education. And it's not just the State Board of Education's vision. We believe it's the Kansas vision. Kansas is blessed with extraordinary educators and administrators whose leadership guides our students to achieve beyond what students themselves often think that they're capable of. So I would like to recognize our superintendent. I'll say "our" this time instead of "your" like I normally do. But I'd like to recognize Mr. Bill Hall for his excellent leadership in making sure that all students are successful in USD 305. And if you'd like to say a few words, now's your chance.
I've never turned down an invitation. You realize that, right? Okay. I'll tell you what, when Mrs. Horst contacted me, State Board Member Horst contacted me to share the fact that we had two of our schools and two grades in two of our schools achieved the Confidence and Task Force Achievement Award, I was extremely impressed. I was very, very pleased. And to me, I mean, we have all the students that came here this evening. You see all the awards and all the talented kids that we have, and it's just unbelievable. But when we see a group of students recognized for academic success, and these are students who come to, and two of our schools that have come to with a great need, and we're seeing success. And I just can't say enough to commend both Oakdale Elementary School and Central High School for the work that they've done with these students and the accomplishments that they've made academically. So thank you, Ms. Rector. Thank you, Ms. Torchwater, for your excellent leadership and all the teachers at Oakdale and Central High.
And with no further ado, and I do have a few comments after. So while we're taking pictures, maybe, or maybe I should say them now, so you can go ahead. I know that all of you are continuing to work hard. And I want you to know that all of your hard work is making a difference. And we across the state are so proud of your efforts. Keep setting high expectations, Board, and teachers, and administrators, and parents. Keep providing the support your students need and keep believing that Kansas can lead the world in the success of each student. And as you do that work, know that you have the support and gratitude of everyone on the State Board of Education and the State Department of Education. Congratulations. And to these folks and who I'm going to announce here in a little bit. And thank you for all that you do as board members, as parents, as the other central administrators and the building administrators. Thanks for all you do. And students, particularly, all you do to make yourself successful. All right, let's get to the big deal. Oakdale Elementary is being recognized for third grade math and Central High School for 11th grade reading. So if representatives would come up here, it'll be one of those photography moments and...
Maybe Mr. Hall?
That would be very nice.
I think Mr. Hall would be our representative.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dina, for those really kind words. We appreciate you making the trip all the way down here to present those awards. Moving on in our approval for consent agenda items, which include, get it over here, the minutes of our March 8, 2016, regular meeting, our personnel report, our treasurer's report, our investment report, our journal entries, our approving the incumbents' listings, which include a CDWG in the amount of $342,700 for the purchase of 1,150 Dell Chromebooks and Google Chrome Management Licenses for bleachers at Lakewood Middle in the amount of $38,485 to Hanson Sports, Inc., approve Lakewood Middle and South Middle change order for additional access controls on exterior doors to Harbin Construction in the amount of $36,353.34 for Lakewood and Busman Row Construction in the amount of $33,055.07 for South Middle. We are approving the 2016, excuse me, the 2016-17 School Resource Officer Agreement at a rate of $279.83 a day for each officer assigned to the district, and we're approving the Heartland Federal Head Start, Early Head Start Grant for two years in the amount of $4,000, or I'm sorry, $4,405,587 to include a 25% match of $1,103,97. Can I get a motion to approve these consent agenda items as presented?
I move that consent agenda items be accepted.
Okay, I have a motion and a second from Mary Ann. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those both same signs, so move 7-0. Moving on to our public forum, if anybody would like to address the board, now is your time.
Do you have the sheet?
I have a sheet, so I know there's somebody.
We did receive a sheet from someone.
So somebody, is Nikki, are you Nikki Harder? Awesome. Just before you say anything, I'm going to read my little public forum, just reminding you that a public forum is a non-action item on the agenda. The board, we appreciate you coming and sharing with us your thoughts and concerns, but this is not an appropriate time or place for patrons like yourself to make a comment of a personal nature about any district employee or student. Persons making comments which violate the privacy rights of district employees and students will be asked to stop speaking or cease their remarks. If a patron or parent has a concern with one or more employees, the board will refer that person to the appropriate supervisor or to the superintendent for further review. Do you understand that?
Yes.
Okay. Please.
There was just an incident last month of some students suspended, and I just felt that that was handled poorly.
Okay.
I thought that the way that the outcome of it came out a little poorly, that maybe if they're going to do what they did and the way that they did handle it, that maybe they handle it for a whole school. Maybe the whole school needs to understand exactly what they expect from them instead of only those kids. My student didn't know that when he told the truth. Neither did the other kids when they went in and told him the truth. He could have lied, he didn't lie. So I think that if they were going to have them speak privately and do a whole thing with resource officers, that it should have been done in a whole, across the board, to the entire school. So the entire student board, or all of them, will know what the repercussions are for seeing something that they seen. Because witnessing a fight, you shouldn't be suspended, you wouldn't think. I've never been suspended for witnessing a fight. So my kid wouldn't have thought, asked, "Were you there?" He said yes, and he was suspended. So then those certain kids got pulled off to the side and met with a resource officer, and they got explained a whole bunch of things. I just felt that if that situation was going to happen, that maybe all of the students at Lakewood should understand that that's what's going to happen to you, and these are the repercussions if you witness a fight, instead of just this small group of kids. My youngest son wouldn't know that, he knows it now. But how many of them don't know that? This is the only school that I have seen that has suspended kids for witnessing a My other two kids that go to a different school, didn't, they've seen multiple fights this year, they didn't get suspended, they got sent back to class. So I kind of got a little issue with that. So I don't understand where the positive influence came from my kid to learn from, because he didn't learn anything positive from the school or the administration. So I don't know what we're teaching them, and that's my problem. If I'm supposed to trust the administration, where was the positivity that my son was supposed to learn? Not just mine, there's other parents, too, that have the same concern of the positivity to teach them something, instead of all negative.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you so much. Did you want to say anything else? Okay, well, thank you for coming and taking the time to visit with the board. We encourage and value your input. It takes a lot of courage to come up here and stand in front of us and tell you how you feel, so we appreciate that. If there's anybody else who would like to come and speak after Ms. Harder, they can do so now at this time.
Do you know how you find out how that gets changed through the policies of the schools?
Well, just from this point on, we can take it under further review and just take it from there, so that's not, this particular board meeting isn't the time to kind of discuss that, but that's something that we can sure look into.
We didn't really get, I didn't really, we didn't get really very far with the other approach, so we didn't know where else to go.
Well, the board will take it under advisement, and I can sure look into that, so.
Absolutely.
So how do we find out?
I will contact you.
You will contact me?
Very good.
That's what I wanted to know.
Thank you so much. Moving on in our agenda to our action agenda, starting with Central High, our Central High School final guaranteed maximum price with Mr. Upson.
Yes, I believe that you have this presentation minimized on your desktop. You want to go ahead and pull it up?
Good evening. We're here to present the Phase 2 GMP for Central High School, and this represents the last of the GMP presentations for the high schools, and almost the end of the bidding process for the bond. We've got our three support buildings remaining after today. So I will reintroduce Scott Kimsey, who was the lead estimator on the project, and we'll talk through the GMP and where it landed, and we'll look at it.
Hi, Scott Kimsey with McCown Gordon Construction. A little bit about the process, we got final 100% construction documents issued back in late January. We issued the documents for bid through our bid invitation services, as well as the local city plan rooms, Salina Blue Plan Rooms, and actually had fairly decent sub-response. We received three, four, or five bids in most all categories, and have a fair bit of local and regional participation that we're extremely happy to report on. The document that you see up on the screen is the overall estimate summary for the final GMP of Package 2 for Salina Central. I know it's a lot of numbers and probably pretty small, doesn't mean a lot to you guys until I get down here to the bottom. Our GMP amount for Package 2 is $22,972,639. This amount includes approximately $1.1 million worth of cost reductions that we have worked fairly tirelessly with Chris and the design team to scrub through the documents, much as we did with Salina South, and make sure that we're spending our dollars in the wisest ways that we possibly can with an eye on trying to provide the most bang for the buck. Of those cost reductions, we've broken them down into about four, five categories here. Kind of go around the circle here and talk about some of the major items in each of these. Scope reductions were about 25% of the overall, $1.1 million worth reduction, so $250,000, $275,000. This was generally related to a reduction in the scope of work associated with the kitchen that we peeled back at the end of the process. Next would be MEPF, this is our Mechanical, Electrical, Plumbing, and Fire Protection Systems. The, one of the items, major items, was looking at alternative ways to, for conduit pathways, so utilizing different electrical processes, as well as a reduction in some lighting costs from our lighting vendor. Building envelope, this was really looking at alternative ways for, to flash the building, alternative trim systems for the exterior metal cladding, as well as looking at different signage opportunities than what was previously designed. I should note that in the MEPF, on envelope, both of these areas, as well as interior that I'll talk about here briefly, all the, pretty much all the items that were accepted here were accepted at South, so with a few exceptions. On the interiors, some of the things that we looked at were drywall, some alternative materials for drywall framing, just like we did at South, alternative materials for ceiling framing. We did peel back some finishes in the corridors we had planned on, upgrading some corridor finishes, and the budget didn't quite allow for that, so that's one of the things that we pulled out. And then the site, we pulled, made a few changes, changed some of the mulching materials and how we were treating some seating areas and things like that. So all that to get to our total GMP amount, again, as I said, $22,972,639. So, and I believe in your packet, you guys have what that means to the budget as a total. I think it's approximately $1.4, $1.5 million over the current approved budget, so.
Are there any questions about the budget reduction process or the cost reduction process that Scott described?
Okay, we do have a couple of slides that just would like to run through here real quick to reiterate a couple of things that were kind of interesting to us as we went through the process. I've got Todd Knight here from my office, who's the project executive associated with the project, and I think he's going to step in here, talk briefly. But I'll start it off. One of the things that we wanted to highlight was what we felt was kind of the value that came to the city through the construction management process, and really kind of peeled it all the way back to at the time of the bond issue in 2014?
14.
13, 14. The scope of work that was envisioned for Salina Central, and as you look at this slide on the left side, this is the first floor of Salina Central, and what was, the red areas identify areas that were anticipated to be renovated at the time of the bond issue. The blue areas were areas that were anticipated to be new construction or additions. The right, the image on the right over here, under final GMP, identifies the areas that are being renovated today as part of the current GMP amount. Again, red areas are renovation, blue areas are new construction and additions. Next page is the amount of work happening on the second floor, and I think, you know, there's a lot of, a lot of value that's been provided through the process. The other thing, I'll let Todd speak here, that we analyzed was just the overall kind of trends of square footage and cost.
Good afternoon. So yes, this was something that we thought was very important to bring to the attention. There was a big focus on trying to generate as much value into the project as possible through this effort, and as the bond issue was prepared, the original square footage for renovation was 115,000 square feet, and the anticipated new construction was 63,000. So basically, we would be either creating or touching roughly 179,000 square feet total. So through all general types of engineering and creative architecture, we were actually able to shoehorn into the project roughly 171,000 square feet of renovation. We felt it was appropriate, with learning from the team and Shanna and the whole group, we really felt it was important to renovate absolutely as much square footage of Salina Central as humanly possible. So we really stretched the dollar, we were very creative in the materials that we chose, the systems that we incorporated in the project, but also didn't sacrifice quality. So that being said, the final GMP includes, like I stated before, 171,000 square feet of renovation, and we were actually able to reduce the new construction square footage, kind of slide some things around and slide some of those program areas into the existing structure. That avoided some new square footage, which is the costly component of any construction project, is of course, building footings and slabs and walls and all of the, everything that goes along with a new addition. So that being said, we kind of have two graphs, you can kind of see the top red line is the square footage of the building, the original bond issue. You see it starts over on the left-hand side at 178,000, and through the end, it creeped up all the way to 226,000. And in the bottom gray line, there is the cost per square foot. So originally anticipated, the project was roughly, gosh, if I can see that, $100,41 a square foot, and in the end, the project is going to be delivered for?
121.
121. So as you can see, there was roughly a $20 per square foot savings, so that allowed us to really renovate a good portion of the building. The only areas that we are actually not touching of Salina Central is the weight room and the auditorium. So every other square foot in the building will have something done to it, some heavy renovations and some more light finish-type updates. So wanted to definitely share that with you all tonight and let you know how it all went. Any questions?
Could you go back to the slide, the two slides just prior to that, where you show us the diagram and changes and so on? Could you explain a little bit more of the changes? You mentioned that some of the new construction will not occur. For example, on the left-hand side with the bond issue, we've got a blue section up toward the top that disappears. What was that going to be?
Some of it was a shuffling of how we dealt with the spaces. I think at the time of the bond issue, it was envisioned that there would be an administrative addition over here. That was science, okay. So science actually went, you'll see at the bond issue, we don't have an addition here. So what happened is the science addition actually slid down here. So the, on the right, the, the little blue appendage that sticks out to the left of the building over here, it's kind of hard to see my cursor, but that, that addition just moved to the south essentially. I think the, the square footage reductions really came in right sizing of the additions and determining how to get efficient. The two areas that I think we really right-sized things through the process were the performing arts addition. We drove a lot of efficiency into that. We had a lot of wasted space in the original design. And then the media center addition that happens kind of in the courtyard space right here in the middle. And you can see here, the performing arts addition really went from something that was quite large to something, you know, more reasonably sized. Didn't lose any program area, though.
We might also mention, as you can see, if you flip between the first and second floors, this addition here actually became, kind of slid to the center core and it became a two-story volume. So you see here, this science wing was always anticipated to be two-story. In the final GMP, the center core area where the media center is now located becomes two-story, and that gains efficiencies by one roof system and one foundation system. So it was just a creative architectural design and, and engineering feat to accomplish that, but in the end, it, it drove efficiencies and cost savings into the project by doing something such as this.
Thank you. Do you have a recommendation then for us?
No, we're, we're done. Yes, I'd, I'd like to recommend that the board make a motion to approve the GMP Two for Central High School, and I believe you have language on your machine for that.
I move that we approve the final guaranteed maximum price for Central High School in the amount of $28,811,870, and authorize the district to enter into a construction contract with McAllen Gordon Construction. For additions and alterations, the Central High School is presented.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion before we vote? Seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign, so move 7-0. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, and just as a follow-up, we are now at that point, as far as all of our bond construction projects are concerned, that we now have 13 projects that are actively in progress, four that will be completed this spring, one that will be completed over the summer, late summer, and then the remainder of those in the fall and into spring. A year from now, we will have two projects remaining that will be Central High and South High. And the final three buildings that, that are left to be bid and designed and bid are Opportunity Now, Salina Education Center, and the Hagman Building are our three smallest projects. And so we're very, in very, very good position moving forward. I think the progress has been very, very good.
Yeah, very good.
All right, thank you, appreciate it. Moving on in our action agenda to our 1617 textbook rental fees with Mr. Hall.
Yes, Madam President, this is somewhat of a formality, but there is a bit of a change. It's, it's, it's exciting change with, with all-day kindergarten on our doorstep due to be rolled out here in August. We, we come to you with textbook rental fees. The only change in that is to increase the, the kindergarten fees from $45 to $60 in, in light of the additional half-day and the additional resources and supplies that will be necessary because of the additional half-day. But beyond that, all other textbook rental fees for the 1617 school year will remain the same.
Madam President, I move we approve the textbook rental fees for the 201617 school year as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion before we vote? Seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign, so move 7-0. Moving on to our 1617 participation fees.
Yes, Madam President, again, no change in, in the participation fees from 1516 to 1617. Currently, the participation fees for, for students who would like to be involved in middle school or high school extracurricular activities are $100 for high school, $50 for middle school. Students who qualify for reduced-price lunches would be $50 for high school, $20 for middle school, and then students who qualify for free lunches, be sliding scale, be $30 for high school and $10 for middle school. So I would recommend to the Board of Education that you approve the 1617 participation fees as presented.
All right. Marian?
I move that this body approve the 20162017 participation fees as presented.
All right, I have a motion and a second from Nedra. Any discussion before we vote? Seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign, so move 7-0. Moving on to Mastery Connect with Ms. Xline.
Yes, at the last board meeting, I visited with you and had some teachers here to visit with you about adopting Mastery Connect, to use District Wide. I do have one correction to what I submitted in the packet, and I apologize. The amount that is in the packet is 56,300. The actual amount for the first year is 62,300. That was a third of the overall cost. The second, two years go down. So the, so the proposal and the motion, if you are going to approve this, should be for 62,300 for this first year. I did have one question that I wanted to clarify in light of what is happening at the state right now. As you know, there is much discussion about whether or not the Kansas College Career Ready standards will be replaced, and actually, that was on the floor today being discussed. What you do need to know is that even without the current standards, this system is usable. We can submit any objectives that we want to align our test data to, and Mastery Connect will input those into the system. So it doesn't matter what the standards are that Kansas has adopted, we can still use this. So it's not money that's wasted should the standards end up changing. And so I just wanted to clarify that. And if there are any other questions, I'm certainly happy to clarify.
Okay.
So how will the additional years come back to us? Since we really want a three-year contract, right?
Right. The additional years will be 53,300.
Right, but how will they come back to us? Will they come back as consent agenda, or will they come back as another action item?
If the board approves the initial purchase, then we will bring these back on the renewals under consent agenda items. And, and that being said, I, probably a year from now, we'll be coming back to the board with a presentation on, on the success of Mastery Connect. But we do want to share with you the results of Mastery Connect, because I think as a Board of Education, if we approve this, this purchase, then we need to provide you with information about how this is working. So we will come back with a report prior to the purchase of the next year.
Are we ready for motions?
Madam President, I move that we approve the purchase of Mastery Connect in the amount of $62,300 as corrected.
Okay, I have a motion and a second from Ann. Any additional discussion before we vote? Seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign, so move 7-0. Moving on in our action agenda to our special meeting for board tours, Mr. Hall?
Yes, Madam President, and somewhat of a follow-up from the Central High GMP conversation, we are in fact closing in on, on our first finished projects. Coronado Elementary School is on the cusp of being completed. We have Meadowlark Ridge Elementary School shortly thereafter, and Oakdale Elementary. They're all, they're all moving toward the final stages of completion. We're looking, big Cottonwood probably about August, Lakewood about May. And so with that in mind, we thought this would be a great opportunity for the board to, to get together and, and tour those facilities and see firsthand the great work that, that our bond project department and our contractors and architects have done in completing those facilities. So with that in mind, I would respectfully request the Board of Education to set a special Board of Education meeting for March 30th to 216. We would convene here at the district office at 8:25, and from that point, we would travel to Coronado Elementary School, and from there to Meadowlark Ridge Elementary School, and then from there to Oakdale Elementary, plan on being completed prior to noon, about noon thereabouts, 11:30, 12 o'clock, something like that.
Okay. Anybody like to make a motion for that, Nedra?
I so move.
Okay, and anybody like to make a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this before we vote?
Do we need our hard heads? Probably not.
I don't think so. I think we're okay. I don't think there's anything falling from the ceilings anymore, so I think we'll be okay.
Any additional?
Not that there ever were anything falling. The way I said that implied that there were.
You never know. All right, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign, so move 7-0. Moving on in our agenda, it looks like we have nothing to discuss, so we'll go on to our school board committee reports and upcoming dates of importance, which include what you kind of alluded to earlier, Mr. Hall, is our Coronado ribbon cutting and open house at 6:30 on Monday, April 18th, our retirement reception at Lakewood at 3:00 p.m. on Sunday, May 1st, then the next ribbon cutting and open house at Oakdale at 6:30 p.m. on Tuesday, May 3rd, then we go to Meadowlark for ribbon cutting at 6:30 p.m. on Monday, May 9th. Thursday, May 12th is our DCP graduation at Salina West at 4:00 p.m. And then, of course, on Sunday, May 15th is the graduations at By Center with Central High first at 2:00 p.m. and South High following at 5:00 p.m. Monday, May 16th is another ribbon cutting at Lakewood at 6:30 p.m. And then Thursday, May 19th, we have the SAEC graduation ceremony at 7:00 p.m. And then Saturday, May 21st is the last, I believe is the last chamber legislative meeting at 8:30 a.m. Ann, would you like to start us off with our committee reports?
I don't have any committee reports. I will say that I did participate in the preparation for a Talk Salina discussion, which I think Mr. Hall will be talking about. I'm sorry to say, I will be not able to attend the last legislative meeting, so I hope the rest of you will hold down the fort.
Okay. And Ramona, I don't know if you're on anything, so.
I have no report.
We're just happy to see you, for you to be here. Brett?
I have nothing to report.
I attended the NEA Salina meeting on March 10th. Also attended Partners for Success on March 11th was, which is always absolutely fabulous, and the students that graduate are just, just thrilled with the skills that they have learned that they can actually put into place and be, become employed. It's really nice to see all of that happen.
Nedra, aren't they having an open house for Partners for Success?
They are this Friday, four, is it four to six?
Sounds right.
Four to six, and, and you can bid on raffles to help fund that. Yeah, so go, go out, they've been posting on Facebook, actually, all the gifts that they have for raffles, and they're very nice. I also attended Salina Education Foundation meeting. We've been really busy at work, working on 305 Live already, which is Wednesday, May 25th at the Stiefel. Doors open at 6:00 and the concert is at 7:00, and, and I would suggest you go. It's really going to be another, I think, a, a successful event, and be looking for posters out. We're opening, opening it up really soon, and tickets will be on sale.
Great. Carol?
Yes, I also attended the Partners for Success graduation, and indeed, it was interesting. There was a wrap, and that was fun. Not one you eat, but you know, the wrap wrap, and that was really good, really enjoyed that. And I also attended the Chamber Ledge meeting. Someone asked earlier if I was edified by it. Probably not.
I was unable to go to Partners for Success, but I did attend the legislative meeting last Saturday, and.
Speechless.
Well, I was also there, and yeah, we'll leave it at that as well. I also attended the Smokey Hill Service Center. They discussed the post audit that they received, and it was finally, I think, final. But what's actually going to come of that, I, I don't think anything well, to be honest with you. I think it was more of a, almost a witch hunt, for lack of a better terminology for that. So I guess moving on in our, our agenda to Mr. Hall's report.
And just to follow up from, from that, Ms. Vosler, from the legislative post audit report on Smokey Hill, I did reassure Mr. Montalma at our last superintendent's council a couple weeks ago that, in visiting with the board, they really have no intention of going a different direction from Smokey Hill at this point in time, based on conversations I've had with you, that irrespective of what legislative post audit had to say. So, that being the case, a lot of good things happening. Obviously, we've come, coming back from spring break now, well-deserved spring break for students and staff alike, and so we're, we're moving toward our, our last quarter as we finish out the school year. We did have an opportunity, there is, I would like to announce the Talk Salina event that is coming up. It is on March 29th, that would be a week from this evening, with two different sessions. It's 4:00 p.m. and 7:00 p.m. at Lakewood Middle School. Had the opportunity with Ms. Zimmerman, we, we attended a training, gosh, a week or so back now on Saturday, on just learning how to be public facilitators and to, and really it's a good opportunity to meet some, some folks that, that I hadn't met before, and so it's a great, a great learning experience. The event next Tuesday will be an opportunity, we'd like, we'd like to encourage as many folks from the community to come to that event as possible. Obviously, all of you are certainly invited, would like to, to see you there as well, but the conversation's going to be around early childhood education in Saline County, and the importance of early childhood education to the future of our students and the future of our, our school system, and the future of our community and, and our nation, quite honestly. So that being the case, we really need to have some, some sincere conversations about what early childhood education is and quality of early childhood education is and what it is not, and what we can do to maybe beef that up and provide more support for our children here in Saline County. So I encourage all of you to attend. I encourage folks who are listening to this at home, if at all possible, to be there. It's really a, a civic dialogue, discourse that we need to, to have. And irrespective of, of how folks feel about the importance of early childhood education, we really would like to hear from all folks. So again, that's next Tuesday, March 29th, 4:00 p.m. and 7:00 p.m. We, we've had, I want to bring the board up to speed on, on an initiative we, we started this year. We put together a district safety committee, and we've been meeting monthly since August, I believe it, it's been. So the focus of the committee is to decrease the number of workplace injuries within USD 305. We have a committee of eight to 10 folks representing different categories, different cross-section of, of our district employees. We focused on such things as eliminating slips and falls, being very, very careful in terms of, of how you carry things, how you move things around, how you handle your body when it comes to workplace safety. We've been very proactive in reminders to staff on a regular basis, whether it be via email, whether it be posting subtle messages on the walls in our schools about be careful when you're, when you're climbing stairs, when you're climbing ladders, when you're doing different things, make sure you're always practicing workplace safety. We've provided step ladders to all of our schools to encourage them not to do things that they shouldn't be doing, and to use a step ladder when they need to climb and, and hang something as opposed to maybe a, a chair with wheels on it or something like that. And, and so we've been, we've done that as a visible reminder. We, we, since that time, I, I feel very good about the results. We've decreased from last year to this year, at this time, the number of workplace injuries by over 50%. And so we feel very, very good about the fact, and, and not the fact that we've reduced claims, but also the fact that we have a safer work environment for all of our employees. And that's what our, that's what our vision is, that's what our mission is, is to make sure that all of our, all of our schools and, and our district office are, are safe places for, for our folks to come and work and, and make a difference with students. So we're very, very pleased with the work of the Safety Committee.
What is our yearly average of?
Right now, right now, we have 83.
Really?
Claims thus far since school began. A year ago at this time, we had 142. So we've done, we've done quite well. And, and I think a lot of that is just raising awareness. It's just raising awareness that it's important to practice workplace safety. I had, we had a little story on, on a student, one of our schools, who had, we've been so prevalent in terms of hanging out signs and all that, that one of our students noticed one of the staff members doing something they shouldn't be doing, and I think went and told the principal, so and so was doing this, probably shouldn't be doing. So that's a good, it's a good reminder for everyone. And so I, I, I'm just very, very pleased with the work of the Safety Committee. I think it yielded some positive results, and, and our, our goal is to continue that communication year in and year out, and year, it's not just one year. I think we need to just make it a process to where it's institutionalized. So it's been very, very good work of the Safety Committee, and I applaud all their effort.
Mr. Hall, I've noticed the posters at Meadowlark, I've been over there a few times, and there are, like, it might make more sense to take two trips instead of carrying it all at once, so.
They're, they're very friendly reminders. They're, they're not, you know, negative at all. They're very friendly reminders, so. I'm very, very pleased to announce, and I know the board I'm very, very pleased to announce, and I know the board, the board's already approved this, this contract, but we do have a new principal at Lakewood, Lakewood Middle School, Ms. Bonnie Wiltie. Ms. Bonnie Wiltie comes to us from, I believe, Overland Park, and she will actually be visiting our school system tomorrow. Oh, no, a week from tomorrow, a week from today, next Tuesday, to really meet some folks. I have some plan to visit with her. I think she'd like to go to Lakewood and meet with some of the staff members there. And so I, I feel very, very good about the change in, in leadership and the direction we're moving. And we'll be able to sustain a lot of good things happening at Lakewood Middle School under Ms. Wiltie's leadership. That being said, we're in the process of, of setting up interviews for the Central High School principal position. We're screening applicants and expect to have interviews. We've had those scheduled next week. And so we're moving forward with the, the hiring process for Central High. And, 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 and contrary to, to Mary Ann, I, I won't necessarily be speechless on our legislative update. Because I have, I do have a few things I need to share. They've been very, they've been very busy, and they are really, that, that's an understatement. They are planning on, on a journey this week. I think they would like to journey Thursday or Friday. They will take about a month-long break before they come up for the final closing session. One of, one of the items that they discussed this morning, I had several conversations with Representative Dirks this morning, and later on this afternoon, House Bill 2729 was related to procurement of services. That particular proposal would require purchases for instructional technology, software, computers, fuel, and food to be under state administration, which would require all districts to purchase those, those items from the state list, so to speak. Local vendors would have an opportunity to bid on those, provided they're within 3% of whatever the state pricing is. And that, I understand, I know there was an amendment introduced to remove fuel. It appears that there was some resistance to that. And then in the end, as I visited with Ms. Dirks, she said that in the end, it was sent back to committee because they felt like there was still more work that needed to be done. And she feels that that's one that may not come back, you know? And so that, that one, at this point, it's in committee, but we may not see it again. So that's kind of where that's at. Ms. Xine referred to House Bill 2292, which is referred to as the anti-common core bill. And, and that one is, is really, last I heard, and we have Dean Horst here, but last I heard, it was still kind of on the floor of the House. And it's still there. I don't think any, any action's been taken.
They were discussing when I left.
Yeah, Representative Dirks referred to it as the House leaders were huddled around together trying to figure out what to do next. You know, that particular bill would basically make it illegal to in any way implement the common core standards. It would require the State Board of Education to adopt new standards. And then once those new standards are adopted, it would be subject to legislative review. And so that's kind of where we are with that. Poses all kinds of questions, obviously. The, the future of, of programs like Advanced Placement, the future programs like International Baccalaureate, you know? And, and so I, I certainly hope that folks out there will contact their representatives and, and make sure that that particular proposal does not come through. Because that, that would, in my, in my mind, that would set us back about five or six years. And so that's where we are at that point, and that, that's really all I know. I wish I had more information, but I think they were just kind of talking about it at this point. I'm not sure they have the votes, but we'll see what happens.
When I left, they were talking about the Massachusetts standards, so.
Adopting those, adopting the Massachusetts standards? Okay.
And allowing us to still use our tools.
That's, that's positive, I think. Right.
Mr. Hall, could you be specific for the public as to why Common Core is being ousted?
You know, I, I wish I could.
Exactly.
It really depends, Ms. Elbow, on, on which legislator you would like to visit with. I think they all have a different opinion. I think, and it goes back several years, you know, this has been three, three or four years that, that the Common Core standards have been under attack. And, and the arguments range everywhere, everywhere, all the way from, this is federal intrusion. This is another example. This is the, the education version of Obamacare. I think it's been blamed on that, even though the federal government had, had nothing to do with the development of the Common Core standards. I think there are folks who believe that there's a federal conspiracy involved. And so, you know, a lot of that, when we've asked folks to read the standards, there's not a lot of folks that can look at any of the standards and see anything within the standards themselves that would be in any way threatening to students, you know? And so I, I wish I had a definitive answer, but, but I, I think a lot of it has to do with the state's concern about federal intrusion. And they view that as federal intrusion. On the other hand, the same legislators that view that as federal intrusion also profess the importance of local control, which is, seems to be kind of opposite to me, but you know.
That's, that's what I want to share.
So in the end, this Board of Education has established and approved the curriculum in line with the state standards, and, and that's where it should remain, so. We'll see what happens, you know, continue to talk to, to our legislators and, and see what we can do to, to make sure that that doesn't change. Still waiting on the resolution to come in compliance with Gannon. I had a conversation with Ms. Peters today. We're trying to siphon through the latest, the latest runs on what we have, the two latest proposals, because there's a new one, there's a new one out now. And, and it's just really complicated, so I don't really want to go into explaining what's going to happen. I think in the end, they're still basically wanting to take from other districts to, to satisfy other districts. It's going to be very interesting to see if they can come up with a solution that they can support, number one, that will also be in compliance with the Supreme Court's order. So that, that's still out there, and we're waiting to, to hear what happens with that. The Senate did vote this morning. We did have the judicial impeachment proposal, and they did approve that 21 to 19. And I thought that was interesting. They approved it that, that, this morning, they, to specify action that could get a Kansas Supreme Court justice fired from his or her job. But then they also tossed in actions that could also see the governor and other statewide officers impeached. So I thought that was interesting. Then they said, "The bill more clearly defines high crimes and misdemeanors as the general reason for impeachment proceedings, including committing crimes, breaching public trust and ethics, plus attempting to subvert fundamental laws and introduce arbitrary power and attempting to usurp, usurp the power of the legislative or executive branches of government, oh, to also include discourteous conduct toward litigants, jurors, or others wearing, while wearing a robe." So, so, and that did pass 21 to 19. So they are moving forward with their opportunity to seize control from the.
So it still has to go through the House, though, right?
Yes, I believe that was just in the Senate. That was the Senate's vote this morning, and, and it, it did vote, it did pass on the narrowest of margins. But it did, it did pass nonetheless.
Who needs those checks and balances, right?
Correct. Speaking as a former government teacher, I shudder at the thought. And then finally, probably the best note, they are scheduled to adjourn for about a month later this week.
Thank God.
And that's the end of my report.
Is the Sex Ed bill still in committee? They moved it back there, didn't they?
I have not heard anything on that one. Have you, Ms. Xine, at all?
That one I have lost track of because I've been so focused on the Common Core. I will check.
Yeah, yeah. It's opt-in, out, opt-out on Sex Ed.
They want to opt in.
And we need an executive session?
Yes, Madam President, thank you. We, I would like to request an executive session for 20 minutes for the purposes of discussion of personnel.
Okay. Anyone like to do that motion?
Madam President, I move the Board of Education go into executive session at six-twenty-three for the, for 20 minutes for the purpose of discussing personnel matters of non-elected personnel and their contractual obligations. Because if this matter were discussed in open session, it might invade the privacy of those discussed. And that the Board of Education reconvene into open session at six-forty-three in the conference room.
All right, I have a motion. Can I get a second from anybody?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion before we vote? Seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign. So move seven-zero. Thank you.